Good evening. This sixty-fourth meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones or put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor George Hopkins of the Gallery Church. So we immediately follow the prayer. We will have the pleasure of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we ask for the wisdom to navigate the journey ahead. We ask for courage to face the challenges of today and we ask for the unity that compels every citizen to contribute in forming our future. We ask for the humility required to accomplish a work that's greater than ourselves and we ask for the strength to faithfully carry the responsibilities bestowed upon us. Give us the capacity to love beyond our similarities, to dream beyond what we see, to hope beyond what we've experienced, to inspire our city to fulfill our highest potential. We ask that you would establish your standard that redeems the divine dignity of every person in our community and fulfills the wonderful promises of our city until the worth of every soul is felt. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk will now call the roll of the members.
President Scott. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the journals of the following proceedings are on the council members' desks. May sixth, twenty nineteen, May thirteenth, twenty nineteen, June eleventh, twenty nineteen at two P M., and June eleventh, twenty nineteen at five P M.
Without objection, the journals are adopted. Bill signed by the mayor. Bills signed by the mayor can be found on pages two through four of the agenda. All right. Bills to be introduced. Oh, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Sorry about that, you guys. Thank you. Tonight's showcase Baltimore presenter is Monica Guerrero Vasquez of Centro Soul.
Good evening, everyone. I am the executive director of Centro Soul, first-generation immigrant, first-generation college graduate. The reason that I work for Centro Soul is the passion to fulfill the needs of our community and also to lift our assets in the community. Centro Soul is a center for health and opportunities for Latinos. We are based at Johns Hopkins and we serve hundreds of newly arrived immigrants to the U.S. and also U.S.-born Latinos who deserve to receive quality of care and improve the services that they receive. We work with five core areas, trying to improve clinical innovations and prevent cardiovascular disease and mental health issues in the community. We also offer programming for adults and for youth to treat and prevent those issues. We have an advocacy component and we try to inform administrators in the healthcare system and in the community to provide quality of care and healthcare access for the Latino population. Our education component provides opportunity and open doors for new immigrants in Baltimore. We have partnered with city programs and thanks to the private funding, we have been able to give work opportunities or educational opportunities for youth, first-generation and bilingual youth to be exposed to careers in healthcare and medicine with a vision of diversifying the workforce in the healthcare system. Our outreach core component is conform to be part in the community, to partner with different organizations. We provide more than sixty-two events in the community. We facilitate programs in Spanish and English for both immigrant and U.S.-born youth. Our purpose is to diversify the workforce wherever we're at and improve the healthcare for everyone and also create opportunities for our new neighbors. To date, Centro Soul has been established in twenty fourteen and to date, we have had five cohorts of summer scholars who are already graduated from college. Some are attending graduate school and pursuing careers in healthcare and some are already teaching and finding jobs in the health sector in Baltimore City. Our program has served so far more than three thousand people or have had more than twelve thousand encounters. Our office is based in the Bayview area where more than twelve thousand encounters happen during the year and in twenty seventeen, we've had seventy-five percent of those encounters to be with Latino patients. The main struggles that our Latino community faces in Baltimore City are primarily the access to healthcare and quality of care. We offer programs in English and Spanish. Most of our staff is bilingual and that helps to improve the cultural competency of the services that we provide. We have partnered with Baltimore City Public Schools, with private organizations and also local businesses, as well as opening doors at Johns Hopkins to provide opportunities for youth. Right now, our main goal, one of our main goals is to address mental health issues in the Latino community because, as you know, the journey of immigration is long and starts in their home countries, but when they arrive to the U.S., the settlement is not easier. So we're trying to relieve the suffering that they have through preventing mental health issues. We have had grants to support our efforts for the adults and currently, we're actively working to address depression among adults, particularly those who are underinsured.
Thank you. Thank you so much and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
E A nineteen zero two four two, Chi Chi Niaga Nash, Director, Baltimore City Department of General Services.
This has been assigned to the executive nominations committee.
E A nineteen zero two four three, Steve Sharkey, Director, Baltimore City Department of Transportation, District Ten.
This has been assigned to the executive nominations committee. Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill nineteen zero four zero four, Supplementary General Fund Operating and Appropriation, Baltimore City Information and Technology Department, ten million dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of ten million dollars to the Baltimore City Information and Technology Department, Service eight oh five, to provide funding for the city's ransomware response and recovery and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen zero four zero five, General Fund Operating Appropriation Transfer, transfer in the aggregate amount of four million two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for various agency services to the Department of Recreation and Parks, the Department of Transportation, and the Department of Planning. For the purpose of transferring a general fund operating appropriation for the, in the aggregate amount of four million two hundred and sixty thousand dollars from various agency services to the Department of Recreation and Parks for Service six forty-eight Community Recreation Centers in the aggregate amount of two million six hundred thousand dollars and for Service six forty-six Park Maintenance in the aggregate amount of five hundred and sixty thousand dollars to the Department of Transportation for Service six eighty-three Street Management in the aggregate amount of nine hundred thousand dollars and to the Department of Planning for Service seven sixty-three Planning and Resource Management in the aggregate amount of two hundred thousand dollars and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen zero four zero six, Franchise Cell Co. Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless. For the purpose of granting a franchise to Cell Co. Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless, Delaware General Partnership, to construct, install, maintain, repair, operate, relocate, replace, and remove certain communications facilities in and across certain streets and public ways and park properties, subject to certain terms and conditions and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
Nineteen zero four zero seven, Franchise New Singular Wireless PCS. For the purpose of granting a franchise to New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, to construct, install, maintain, repair, operate, relocate, replace, and remove certain communications facilities in and across certain streets and public ways and park properties, subject to certain terms and conditions and providing for a special effective date. City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen zero four zero eight, Amending Ordinance fifteen four two eight, Franchise Crown Castle NG Atlantic Fiber LLC. For the purpose of amending ordinance fifteen four two eight, to reflect the name change of the franchisee since the ordinance was enacted, to add park properties to those areas where the distributed antenna services are provided and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen zero four zero nine, Transparency and Oversight in Claims and Litigation. For the purpose of requiring the Baltimore City Department of Law to post on its website certain claims against Baltimore City regarding police misconduct and unlawful discrimination, requiring the Baltimore City Department of Law to report to the City Council on certain litigation involving Baltimore City, prohibiting the Baltimore City Department of Law from approving certain settlement agreements that require claimants to waive certain rights, prohibiting the Board of Estimates from approving for execution certain settlement agreements that require claimants to waive certain rights, defining certain terms, and generally relating to improve transparency and oversight of claims against Baltimore City. Sponsor, Sneed, President Scott, Schleifer, Dorsey, Henry, Stokes, Cohen, Burnett, Clark, Bullock.
Please note, Councilman Risinger as a co-sponsor, Councilwoman Pinkett as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you, Council President Scott. Thank you all. Thank you to all my colleagues who stood with all the residents of Baltimore City.
My mic's not working. Councilwoman, hold on for one second. Your mic seems to be... Yeah, switch to Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you, Council President Scott. I want to thank all my colleagues who stood with residents of Baltimore City to say victims of police brutality will no longer be silenced. The Court of Appeals has ruled such gag orders is a vital, violates the First Amendment. We are legislators and I know that we can work with all interested parties to do what's right for the victims of the awardees of settlements, to speak their truths. This is the start of mending relationships between police and the citizens of Baltimore City. Thank you.
Thank you and thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you for your leadership. Colleagues, this is an issue that's very important to me as well. I want to thank the Councilwoman for tackling this issue. I know that she's been working on this piece of legislation since the fall. Let's be clear, the city of Baltimore entered into a federal consent decree because we know that we have practices in our police department that violated the constitutional rights of citizens of Baltimore. And if we're truly, and I believe that we will, under the leadership of Police Commissioner Harrison, perform the police department to be efficient, to be effective, and operate in a constitutional matter, we cannot silence the very people that went through the experiences that led to us being the consent decree in the first place. This has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen zero four one zero, the Baltimore City Trauma Responsive Care Act. For the purpose of establishing the Trauma Informed Care Task Force and its members, setting forth certain duties of the task force, requiring certain agencies to designate certain individuals to undergo formal training in trauma-informed care and to perform certain other duties related to ensuring that certain agencies are delivering services in a manner consistent with best practices in trauma-informed care, requiring certain agencies to submit periodic progress reports to the task force, requiring the task force to submit an annual report to the mayor and city council regarding the reorientation of certain city services to focus on trauma-informed care, reconstituting the current Office of Children, Youth, and Families to be the Office of Children and Family Success, making a primary duty of the Office of Children and Family Success to lead a citywide initiative to prioritize the trauma-responsive and trauma-informed delivery of services, defining certain terms, correcting and conforming related provisions, and generally relating to providing trauma-informed services to the citizens of Baltimore. Sponsors, Cohen, Clark, President Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Burnett, Schleifer, Sneed, Bullock, McCray.
Please, Councilman Stokes as a co-sponsor, Councilman Risinger as a co-sponsor, Councilman Pinkett as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to all of my co-sponsors. Mr. President, as you know well, young people in this city are growing up amidst a crisis of violence and yet, far too often, we have prioritized policing over prevention. As a city, we must do more to respond directly to the trauma that our young children experience. We know that fifty-six percent of kids in Baltimore experience one or more major traumas. That could be homelessness, that could be violence, that could be dealing with addiction or an incarcerated adult, and yet, again, we rely so consistently on attempting to police our way out of problems that are truly in the realm of community and public health. And so, this bill is an attempt to make us a trauma-responsive city, for Baltimore to truly lead in what is an emerging national field. And, Mr. President, what I feel most proud and grateful for is the leadership of the three young people that are sitting behind me today, who were the inspiration for this bill. They testified before our joint Public Safety and Education Committee hearing. They told us that as a city, we needed to step up when it came to responding to trauma. And throughout today, we've been having tough conversations all over town, but it's great to see the student leadership. And again, Mr. President, I want to thank you for naming gun violence as a public health issue. I want to thank my colleagues, all the agencies, and all the communities of supporters, some of whom are here with us today, who have been working extremely hard on this bill. And I look forward to shepherding it through with my good colleague, Councilman Burnett, in the Health Committee, that, you know, he's been such a big public health champion and his partnership on this bill has been extraordinary. So, thank you.
Thank you. Please note that Councilman Costello is a co-sponsor. And, Councilman, thank you for your leadership. As you know, gun violence to me is a public health issue. It is a disease and we have to treat it as such. And we know that far too many young people and people in general in Baltimore are dealing with trauma, so it's time that we get our agencies prepared to deal with that trauma and start to address that trauma when we're interacting with the citizens of Baltimore. Thank you. This has been assigned to the Health Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen zero four one one, City Property Renaming Fairmount Harford Building to Lake Clifton Park Building. For the purpose of changing the name of Fairmount Harford Building located at two five 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 Harford Road to Lake Clifton Park Building and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors, Clark, President Scott, Henry Cohen.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Mr. President, members of the council, this building has a long and glorious history. It sits in Clifton Park, right down by Twenty-Fifth and Harford Road, right in the corner. And next month, August, the Reach, R-E-A-C-H, High School will be moving from up on the hill, Lake Clifton, down the hill to a thoroughly renovated new building, which began its life as Clifton Park Junior High, spent many years as Fairmount Harford, and is now going to house the Reach High School, which is part of the great tradition of Lake Clifton High, of Clifton High School. So, we're asking to... So, a whole lot of meetings got held and a whole lot of people got to vote and think about it. So, the building itself is being requested to be renamed as Lake Clifton Park Building. And we are very proud of this building, proud of this high school, and proud of the tradition from which the Rays High School marches down the hill to a renovated school where they will continue to win academic and athletic contests. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. This has been assigned to Judiciary Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen zero four one two, City Property Renaming Engine Fifty-two to Fire Station, Fifty-two Fire Station to Hilton L. Roberts Senior Fire Station. For the purpose of changing the name of Engine Fifty-two Fire Station located at thirty-five twenty-five Woodbrook Avenue to Hilton L. Roberts Senior Fire Station. Sponsors, Pinkett, President Scott.
This has been assigned to Judiciary Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen zero four one three, Planned Unit Development Amendment to Whitehall Cotton Mill. For the purpose of approving certain amendments to the development plan of the Whitehall Cotton Mill Planned Unit Development and providing for a special effective date, sponsor, Pinkett.
Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett? No? All right. This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen zero four one four, High Performance Newly Constructed Dwellings Property Tax Credit. For the purpose of establishing a property tax credit for high-performance newly constructed dwellings, imposing certain limitations, conditions, and qualifications for credit eligibility, providing for the amount, duration, and administration of the credit, defining certain terms, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to property tax credit for high-performance newly constructed dwellings. Sponsors, Costello, Schleifer, Henry, Clark, Burnett, Sneed, Cohen, Bullock, McCray, Stokes.
Please note that Council President Scott is a co-sponsor, Councilman Risinger is a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we're all aware, the newly constructed dwelling credit expired on June thirtieth of twenty nineteen. That was state-enabling legislation, which we had subsequently used authorizing legislation at the local level. Without speculating as to why or pointing fingers, I've been working very closely with Mayor Young and his administration to figure out a way to restore that credit. We have found a creative way to do that without state re-enabling legislation under the high-performance umbrella. This legislative fix also ensures that those who applied between April first and June thirtieth and may not have received the credit because of either A, ASSTAT was unable to complete a partial year assessment or the ransomware attack held them up, will be made whole and will be eligible, as well as those individuals who would have purchased a new property between July first and when this bill is hopefully enacted. This credit's a proven tool to attract new homeowners to Baltimore City. It's been utilized in all fourteen council districts, as well as all six state legislative districts. The administration and I will be working with our partners in the General Assembly to have the original newly constructed dwelling authority re-enabled during the twenty-twenty session and then subsequent authorizing legislation, which I'll be working with the president and the administration on at the city level in twenty-twenty. Mr. President and colleagues, thank you for your support.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen zero four one five, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R eight zoning district, variances seventeen hundred West Franklin Street. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R eight zoning district on the property known as seventeen hundred West Franklin Street as outlined and read on the accompanying plat and granting variances from certain bulk and off-street parking regulations. Sponsors, Bullock.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen zero four one six, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two, Three Dwelling Units in the R eight zoning district, variances two thousand five West Baltimore Street. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R eight zoning district on the property known as two thousand five West Baltimore Street as outlined and read on the accompanying plat and granting variances from certain bulk and off-street parking regulations. Sponsor, Bullock.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen zero four one seven, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R eight zoning district, variances fourteen ten West Saratoga Street. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R eight zoning district on the property known as fourteen ten West Saratoga Street as outlined and read on the accompanying plat and granting variances from certain gross floor area, gross floor area per unit type, and off-street parking regulations. Sponsor, Bullock.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen zero four one eight, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R eight zoning district, variance ten forty-seven North Caroline Street. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R eight zoning district on the property known as ten forty-seven North Caroline Street as outlined and read on the accompanying plat and granting a variance from a certain off-street parking regulation. Sponsor, Stokes.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen zero four one nine, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Three Dwelling Units in the R seven zoning district, variance twenty-three ten Utah Place. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R seven zoning district on the property known as twenty-three ten Utah Place as outlined and read on the accompanying plat and granting a variance from certain bulk regulations. Sponsor, Pinkett.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen zero four two zero, Zoning Signage Variances fourteen eleven Warner Street and three oh one Stockholm Street. For the purpose of granting variances from certain signage regulations for the establishment of signs on the properties known as fourteen eleven Warner Street and three oh one Stockholm Street, which lots are to be consolidated as outlined and read on the accompanying plat. Sponsors, Risinger, Costello.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen zero four two one, Rezoning Rear Portions of Sixty-two Forty and Sixty-two Forty-two Bologna Avenue. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the rear portions of the properties known as sixty-two forty and sixty-two forty-two Bologna Avenue as outlined and read on the accompanying plat from the C one V C zoning district to the R one E zoning district. Sponsor, Henry.
Chair, this has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen zero four two two, Zoning Residential Conversions. For the purpose of changing the procedure for the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a multifamily dwelling in the R seven and R eight zoning districts and adding a unit type to the types of units that may be established in a converted dwelling. Sponsors, Bullock, Dorsey.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorse... I mean, Councilman Bullock. Please note that Councilman Risinger is a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, colleagues. I appreciate the time today. Essentially, I'm putting this forward because this is really good policy. It will lead toward a more effective use of time and resources. I looked over and saw Chairman Risinger and thinking about the Land Use Committee and how many bills come in front of that committee around just these conversions. I can say I feel this very acutely as I've done literally dozens of these over this past term and actually three tonight. We know that Baltimore has a large stock of vacant and abandoned housing and they do need repairs and investment. We're looking at conversion in these high-density residential areas. We're looking at those R seven, R eight areas. And essentially, what we've seen is the uneven review of proposals prior to the new transform Baltimore code, which took effect back in June twenty seventeen. And so, the purpose of this is also to establish standards under which conversions would be approved. Again, what we see also is that this is an equity issue. So, we look at some of those small developers who come to our office who are pleading their case to try to rehab some of these properties in areas where some of the houses may be smaller, but in many cases, these are larger properties that would be ineffective if you're trying to do it for one unit. But making it into two units or possibly even more does also add to an issue that we deal with in terms of affordability of housing. And so, to get some of these properties back into viable use, this would help us along with this process. So, again, I do welcome conversations with our colleagues. I know some of you were around during the transform discussions and so, we need to look at how we're going to then look at single occupancy, look at multifamily dwellings. And one thing I would say, to be frank with you, is that this will put us on par with other Maryland jurisdictions. Oftentimes, we are, as legislators, doing work that is essentially zoning work, essentially planning work, and we can get back to some of the more important and substantive business of the council. I do also want to say, as I take my seat, that it's important that we look at cross-boundary coalitions. So, I look at Councilman Dorsey as another co-sponsor, which I appreciate, because whether you're in the ninth district, in western, southwest Baltimore, if you're in the third district, in northeast Baltimore, if you're in the tenth district, we see that these issues affect many of us across the city in east and west Baltimore. So, I thank you for being co-sponsors. I look forward to having a more robust discussion as we move forward with this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee. Resolutions introduced.
City Council Resolution nineteen zero one five seven R, informational hearing vocational education in Baltimore City Public Schools. For the purpose of inviting the CEO of the Baltimore City Public School System, the Executive Director of College and Career Readiness, the Interim Director of Career Readiness, and the Chief Achievement and Accountability Officer to provide information about vocational education programs in city schools and how these and how these programs will be improved. Sponsors Stokes, President Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Burnett, Costello, Cohen, Bullock, Clark, McCray.
Please note that Councilman Pinkett is a co-sponsor. Councilman Schleifer is a co-sponsor. Councilman Risinger is a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a supporter of apprenticeship here in Baltimore City, our young people who probably don't want to attend college, we gotta make sure we create pathways for them. So, if they don't attend college, we gotta make sure our apprenticeship programs work here in the city. And I read an article in the Sun paper that was real appalling, that ten percent of them graduate. Some schools that actually needed extra resources wasn't provided. And out of the ten percent that graduated, thirteen, I mean, the ones that graduated, their salary was only thirteen thousand dollars. And that's kind of appalling. So, the idea of this hearing is to find out how we improve, and also, we will be having an oversight here in our soul on this. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Education and Youth Committee. Consent Calendar. You can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. And without objection, the consent calendar is approved. We will now move to Bills on Second Reader. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Move that we read short titles on second and third reader for the remainder of the hearing?
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of reading short titles for the remainder of the meeting say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We will read short titles for the remainder of the meeting. We will now move to Bills on Second Reader, Housing and Urban Affairs.
City Council Bill Nineteen Zero Three One Seven City Streets Opening Portion of a Three-Foot Alley.
Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Housing and Urban Affairs Committee heard three bills on July ninth, two thousand and nineteen. We're reporting them all this evening. We'll move to advance each of them to the third reader after this, at this meeting. So, for City Council Bill Nineteen Zero Three One Seven, I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
Mr. President, I move to invoke Rule Twelve One to advance this bill to third reader on the same day.
Roll call.
President, President Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Cohen? Councilwoman McCray? Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer?
Yes.
Councilman Middleton is absent. Councilman Pinkett?
Yes.
Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Risinger?
Yes.
Councilman Costello? Councilman Stokes? Councilwoman Snead?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
The ayes have it, and this bill moves to third reader today.
City Council Bill Nineteen Zero Three One Eight City Streets Closing West Fairmont Avenue, a ten-foot alley, a portion of Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard, and a portion of a three-foot alley.
Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Please note that Councilman Costello abstains. All those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to invoke Rule Twelve One to advance this bill to third reader on the same day.
Roll call.
President Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray? Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer?
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett?
Yes.
Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Risinger?
Yes.
Councilman Costello? Councilman Stokes? Councilwoman Snead?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
The ayes have it, and this bill moves to third reader today.
City Council Bill Nineteen Zero Three Seven Three Urban Renewal Canton Industrial Area.
Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are technical amendments on your desks. I move the amendments favorable. I move the amendments.
All those in favor of approving the amendments say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The amendments are approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to invoke Rule Twelve One to advance this bill to third reader on the same day.
Roll call.
President Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Cohen? Councilwoman McCray? Councilman Dorsey? Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer? Councilman Pinkett?
Yes.
Councilman Burnett? Councilman Bullock? Councilman Risinger? Councilman Costello? Councilman Stokes? Councilwoman Snead?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
The ayes have it. This bill moves to third reader today. Judiciary and Legislative Investigations.
City Council Bill Nineteen Zero Three Seven Six Financial Disclosures Fixing Filers Filing and Filings.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a hearing on the bill. There are amendments on my colleagues' desks. I move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor of moving the amendments say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Amendments are approved.
Mr. President, I'd like to recognize-
Yep. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Council President. I just wanted to speak to the substance of the amendments here, as well as the overall thrust of this bill. Just, I know that I've sent out an email summary to every, all the colle- all my colleagues last night, but for the public's interest, I think this is an important bill, and especially one of the amendments in particular. This bill really focuses on three different areas related to financial disclosures. One, getting a hold on who is required to file. Two, what we do when people fail to file as required. And three, certain elements of what is required in the filing. On the front end, at the, we, we, we improve the understanding of how people, of which people are required to file by making sure that's established at the earliest opportunity, literally, when they are looking at a job listing for employment with the city of Baltimore, and then follow through at, at the time of hiring, and then filing directly with the Ethics Board at that time. When people fail to file, we're, for the first time ever, codifying a set of standards for how people are notified that they are late in their requirement to file, as well as what the consequences will be if they continue to fail to file, receiving notifications at five and fifteen days, the Inspector General's Office having the matter referred to them for investigation after thirty days, and the possibility of being suspended without pay at sixty days late. And finally, on the matter of what is required to be disclosed, one thing that I think has all been, been on many people in Baltimore's minds for, particularly this year, is disclosure of board memberships. And so, this bill, for the first time, requires that, that city employees who are required to file financial disclosures also have to disclose what boards they're on. And there's an amendment, and I have to thank Judiciary Committee staff, Matt Peters, for helping me to have a really strong amendment here to close an LLC loophole. Previously, if you had, if you owned five houses, and all five of those houses were purchased and owned by five different LLCs, you would have to disclose all five of those LLCs. But if you owned one other corporate entity that owned those five LLCs, you would not have to disclose your ownership of those five LLCs, only the one. And so, it created this possibility of shell corporations masking attributable entities. And so, this bill corrects that, extending and broadening the definition of what is attributable as an asset. So, I thank you for all your support on this.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilmen, for your leadership. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
We already moved the amendments, correct?
Yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor of approving this bill as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion approved. This bill moves to third reader. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to clarify that on the vote for Council Bill Nineteen Dash Zero Three One Seven City Streets Opening Portion of a Three-Foot Alley, that my vote was to abstain, as well as the vote to move that bill to third reader on the same day, my vote was to abstain. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Please let that be reflected in the notes. Land Use and Transportation Committee. Chair recognizes Councilman-
City Council Bill Nineteen Zero Three Four Zero RPP Area Eighteen Middle East South, adding eight hundred block of North Chester Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Risinger.
Mr. President, and members of the council, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Snead. All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion approved. This bill moves to third reason, reader.
City Council Bill Nineteen Zero Three Four Six Repeal of Ordinance Ninety-Six Zero Three Two New Lexington Terrace Planned Unit Development.
Chair recognizes Councilman Risinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Bullock. All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill Nineteen Zero Three Five Two Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R-seven Zoning District Variances Six Forty-five and Qun Avenue.
Chair recognizes Councilman Risinger.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts on this bill.
Without objection, the finding of facts will be adopted. The finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Risinger.
Mr. President, this bill has amendments on my colleagues' desk. I move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of approving the amendments say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Amendments are approved.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second, second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill Nineteen Zero Three Five Six Zoning Map Amendment One Two Three South Chester Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Risinger.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Without objection, the finding of fact will be- Roll call. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Please note that Councilwoman Clark abstains. The ayes have it. The finding of fact are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Risinger.
Move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Cohen. All those in favor of approving the bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Please note that Councilwoman Clark abstains.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to move the City Council Bill Nineteen Dash Zero Three Five Six to be advanced to third reading on the same day.
Roll call.
President Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray? Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer? Councilman Pinkett?
Yes.
Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Risinger?
Yes.
Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Councilman Stokes? Councilwoman Snead?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
The ayes have it, and this bill moves to third reader today. Third reader requiring invocation of City Council Rule Twelve Dash One for same-day advance from second to third reader.
City Council Bill Nineteen Zero Three One Seven City Streets Opening Portion of a Three-Foot Alley. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
Please note that Councilman Costello abstains. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Nineteen Zero Three One Eight City Streets Closing West Fairmont Avenue, a ten-foot alley, a portion of Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard, and a portion of a three-foot alley. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
Please note that Councilman Costello abstains. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Nineteen Zero Three Five Six Zoning Map Amendment One Two Three South Chester Street. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
Please note that Councilwoman Clark abstains. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Nineteen Zero Three Seven Three Urban Renewal Canton Industrial Area Amendment. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. If there are no objection, we will suspend Rule Nine Dash Seven to refer the following bills read by the clerk to the Judiciary Committee.
Seventeen Zero Zero One Four R Stormwater Remediation Fee Oversight Committee. Eighteen Zero Zero Seven Four R Informational Hearing Impact of Net Neutrality Repeal on City Operations. Eighteen Zero Zero Seven Five R Informational Hearing Municipal Broadband Feasibility Study. Eighteen Zero Zero Seven Six R Investigative Hearing Physical Status of the Municipal Conduit System. Eighteen Zero Zero Nine Zero R Investigative Hearing Baltimore City Board of Liquor License Commissioners. Nineteen Zero One Three Seven R Informational Hearing Baltimore City Recycling Program. Nineteen Zero One Three Nine R Investigative Hearing Municipal Composting. Seventeen Zero Zero Nine Seven Charter Amendment Tenant Assistance Fund. Seventeen Zero Zero Nine Eight Water Bills Restoring Informal Conferences. Eighteen Zero Two Seven Four Commercial Vehicle Monitoring System. Nineteen Zero Three Three Seven Youth Athletic Protection. Nineteen Zero Three Three Nine Building Fire and Related Codes Drainage. Nineteen Zero Three Four Four License, Licensing of Rental Dwellings. Nineteen Zero Three Five Three Charter Amendment Underground Conduit Systems Sale, Transfer, or Transfer or Franchise Prohibited. Nineteen Zero Three Six Five City Property Renaming the Shaken Bake Family Fund Center to the Glenn Doughty Shaken Bake Family Fund Center. Nineteen Zero Three Seven Five Baltimore City Residency Requirements Prohibition Against Purposeful Evasion. Nineteen Zero Three Seven Eight Ethics Board Administration and Staff. Nineteen Zero Three Seven Nine Charter Amendment Ordinance of Estimates. Nineteen Zero Three Eight Zero Charter Amendment Vetoes. Nineteen Zero Three Eight One Charter Amendment Removal of Elected Officials. Nineteen Zero Three Eight Two Charter Amendment City Administrator. Nineteen Zero Four Zero One Comprehensive Bag Reduction. Nineteen Zero Four Zero Three Fair Election Fund Establishment and Administration.
If there is no objection, we will suspend Rule Nine Dash Seven to refer the following bills read by the clerk to the Legislative Investigations Committee.
Nineteen Zero One Four Three R Investigatory Hearings Agency Permitting Processes.
If there are no objection, we will suspend Rule Nine Dash Seven to refer the following bills read by the clerk to the Labor Committee.
Eighteen Zero One One Three R Informational Hearing Hiring for the Druid Lake and Ashburton Reservoir Projects.
If there is no objection, we will suspend Rule Nine Dash Seven to refer the following bills read by the clerk to the Public Safety Committee.
Seventeen Zero Zero Four Zero R Increased Transparency About Police, Police Seized Property.
If there is no objection, we will suspend Rule Nine Dash Seven to refer the following bills read by the clerk to the Yan- Land Use Committee.
Nineteen Zero One Five Six R Informational Hearing Water Outages. Seventeen Zero Zero Seven One Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of Two Dwelling Units to Four Dwelling Units in the R-eight Zoning District Variances Four Hundred to Four Oh Two North Milton Avenue. Eighteen Dash Zero One Eight Eight Zoning Auxiliary Dwelling Units. Eighteen Zero Two Nine Four Rezoning Certain Properties to be rezoned to the new IMU Two Zoning District. Nineteen Zero One Five Six R Informational Hearing Water Outages. That's a repeat. Nineteen- Nineteen Zero Three Three Eight Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R-eight Zoning District Variance One 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 Zero Edmanson Avenue. Nineteen Zero Three Five Zero Rezoning One Four Three Two North Chester Street. Nineteen Zero Three Six Zero Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R-seven Zoning District Variance Twelve Fourteen Bolton Street. Nineteen Zero Three Six One Rezoning Twenty-four Twenty-three and Twenty-four Twenty-five Greenmount Avenue. Nineteen Zero Three Six Seven Rezoning One Twenty-nine and One Thirty-one South Schroeder Street. Nineteen Zero Three Six Eight Rezoning Eleven Forty-one Poplar Grove Street. Nineteen Zero Three Six Nine Rezoning Twenty-nine Oh Eight Belmont Avenue. Nineteen Zero Three Seven Zero Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two- to Two Dwelling Units in the R-eight zoning district, variances thirteen-twenty-six West Pratt Street. Nineteen zero three seven one, Zoning, Conditional Use Banquet Hall, forty-three thirty-nine York Road. A portion of the property known as forty-three thirty-five to forty-three thirty-nine York Road. Nineteen zero three seven four, Res zoning sixteen forty-one North Bond Street. Nineteen zero three eight four, Res zoning thirty-three oh two Edgewood Street, AKA three, thirty-five hundred West Forest Park Avenue. Nineteen zero three nine two, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R-eight zoning district, variance twenty-one thirty-two West Baltimore Street. Nineteen zero four oh two, Zoning, Conditional Use Parking Lots, Hohen Lithograph Building.
If there is no objection, we will suspend Rule nine dash seven to refer the following bills read by the clerk to the Transportation Committee.
Seventeen zero zero two three R, Informational Hearing, Proposed Replacement of the Baltimore and Potomac Tunnel. Eighteen zero one nine one, Termination of Administrative Parking Regulations, Peak Hour Parking Restrictions on the twenty-five hundred through thirty-six hundred and forty-one hundred through fifty-two hundred blocks of Hartford Road. Eighteen dash zero two eight five, Police Ordinances, Repealing the Prohibition on Playing in the Street. Eighteen zero two eight six, Transit and Traffic Speed Limits. Nineteen zero three four one, Franchise Baltimore Region Rapid Transit System, Sections A and C. Nineteen zero three four two, Franchise Central Light Rail.
If there is no objection, we will suspend Rule nine dash seven to refer the following bills read by the clerk to the Health Committee.
Seventeen zero one five three, Food Service Facilities, On-Premise Postings, Inspection Reports, and Suspension Notices.
Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Executive Appointments Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, August the fourteenth, at ten a.m. to review Department of General Services Director of Chi Chi Niagara Nash. On that same day, at ten a.m., there were executive appointments to review the Director of DOT, which is Steve Sharkey. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed. Councilwoman, you have to use Councilwoman Clark's mic. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Sorry about that. The Labor Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, July thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, at five p.m. for the purpose of holding a legislative oversight hearing to have the Baltimore City Fire Department update the Committee on Staffing, Promotional Practices, and Internal Succession Planning. We will also have a hearing on Wednesday, August fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, for the purpose of holding a legislative oversight hearing to have Baltimore City Fire Department update the Committee on Promotional Practices and Internal Succession Planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett. Chairman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to suspend Rule ten-three to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of suspending the rule say aye. All those opposed say nay. Rules will suspend it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Health Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, beginning at ten a.m. hearing in council chambers for Council Bill nineteen dash zero four one zero, the Baltimore City Trauma Responsive Care Act, at the request of Councilmember Cohen from District One.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Rosenger.
Mr. President and members of the council, the Land Use Committee will hold a hearing on Bill nineteen dash zero three seven one, on August twenty-first, at one p.m. in the council chambers. This is zoning as a conditional use banquet hall located forty-three thirty-nine York Road. Port of the property known as forty-three thirty-five through forty-three thirty-nine York Road. Mr. President, I move to suspend Rules ten dash three to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor of suspending the rule say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Rules are suspended.
The committee will hold a hearing with Bill nineteen dash zero four zero two, on August twenty-eighth, at one p.m. in the council chambers. This is zoning. It's a conditional use parking lots at Hohen Lithograph Building. Mr. President, I ask to suspend Rules ten dash two and ten dash three for hearing.
Second by Councilwoman McCray. All those in favor of suspending the rule say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The rules are suspended.
The committee will hold a hearing on Bill nineteen dash four two zero, on August twenty-eighth, at one oh five p.m. in the council chambers. This is zoning for sign variance located at fourteen-eleven Warner Street and three oh one Stockholm Street. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill nineteen dash zero three three eight, on September eleventh, at one p.m. in the council chambers. This zoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a two-dwelling unit in the R-eight zoning district, variances at eleven-ten Edmanson Avenue. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill nineteen dash zero three six seven, on September eleventh, at one oh five p.m. This is a rezoning at one-twenty-nine and one-thirty-one South Schroeder Street. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill nineteen dash zero three six eight, on September eleventh, at one-ten p.m. This is rezoning at eleven-fourty-one Poplar Grove Street. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill nineteen dash zero three six nine, on September eleventh, at one-fifteen p.m. This is a rezoning at twenty-nine zero eight Belmont Avenue. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill nineteen dash zero three seven zero, on September eleventh, at one-twenty p.m. in the council chambers. This is rezoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a two-dwelling unit in the R-eight zoning district with variances located at thirteen-twenty-six West Pratt Street. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill eighteen dash zero two nine four, on September eighteenth, at one p.m. in the council chambers. This is rezoning, certain properties to be rezoned to the new IMU-two zoning district. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill nineteen dash zero five, zero three five zero, September eighteenth, at one oh five p.m. in the council chambers. This is rezoning at fourteen thirty-two North Chester Street. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to suspend Rule ten-three to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of suspending the rule say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, July twenty-fifth, at one-thirty p.m. Council Bill nineteen dash zero four zero four, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriations, Baltimore City Information and Technology Department, in the amount of ten million dollars, at the request of the administration. Mr. President, move to suspend Rule ten-three to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of suspending the rule say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of suspending the rule say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Rules are suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, July twenty-fifth, at one-thirty-one p.m. Council Bill nineteen dash zero four zero five, General Fund Operating Appropriation Transfer, transfer in the aggregate amount of four million two hundred sixty thousand from various agency services to the Department of Recreation and Parks, the Department of Transportation, and the Department of Planning, at the request of the administration. Mr. President, Budget Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, August seventh, two thousand nineteen, at five p.m. in chambers. This will be televised. This is Council Bill eighteen dash zero zero nine one R, Budget Oversight Monthly Hearing for the Baltimore City Police Department. My colleague, Councilman Schleifer, will be announcing the companion bill to that. Mr. President, I move to suspend Rule ten-three to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of suspending the rule say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of suspending the rule say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The rules are suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Judiciary Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, August sixth, at nine a.m. This is City Property Rename, pardon me, Council Bill nineteen dash zero four one one. City Property Renaming Fairmount Hartford Building to Lake Clifton Park Building, at the request of Councilwoman Clark. Mr. President, Judiciary Committee will also hold a hearing on Tuesday, August sixth, at nine oh one a.m. Council Bill nineteen dash zero four zero one, Comprehensive Bag Reduction, at the request of Councilman Henry. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
The Public Safety Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, August seventh, two thousand nineteen, at five oh one a.m. hearing in the council chambers, televised on Charm TV, for Council Bill eighteen dash zero zero nine two R, monthly council stat meetings for Baltimore City Police Department, five oh one p.m., in conjunction with the Budget Committee.
Thank you. Any other committee announcements on this side? Chair recognizes Councilwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend Rule ten-two and ten-three to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilwoman Sneed. All those in favor of suspending the rule say aye. Those opposed say nay. The rules are suspended.
The Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will be hearing Bill one-nine dash zero four one four, High Performance Newly Constructed Dwellings Property Tax Credit, on Thursday, July twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, at ten oh five a.m. The Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will also be hearing Bill one-eight zero three zero four, Property Tax Credit, nine-one-one Public Safety Telecommunicators, on Thursday, August twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, at ten a.m.
Thank you. Any more committee announcements on this side? Regular announcements. Before we, I recognize Councilman Rosenger. I want to ask that he honor a moment of silence for the now one hundred and eighty-five victims of homicide in the city of Baltimore, one hundred and eighty-five, Councilman. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Rosenger. Oh, Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to ask for moments of silence for two individuals. The first is Tyrone West, whose death in custody came six years ago last Thursday. We were joined earlier by his sister, there we go, Tawanna Jones. Every year, I think it's important that we remember that you've kept that name and that issue alive, and I appreciate that. So, that is the first individual. The second individual that I want to have a moment of silence for is Ed Radkowski, who had been the executive director of the first, the East Baltimore, East Baltimore Street Community Development Corporation, which evolved into the Patterson Park Community Development Corporation. He led that organization for about ten years. If there is anyone in my lifetime who has worked harder to resuscitate the neighborhoods around Patterson Park, I do not know who that person would be. There, I could tell a lot of stories about Ed and the time that I spent working with him over in Patterson Park. I'm not going to tell any of them on camera. But the one thing I would say is that he taught me more than anyone about the importance of community development, as well as the mechanics of it. He treated blight as a physical enemy. And he went into the battle of revitalizing a neighborhood like it was a battle. And blight was an enemy force that could flank you. And you had to make sure that you had allies, and you had to fight with your back to strength, so that you could push forward and defeat the enemy. It's been very sad for those of us who were close to Ed to deal with his passing, but I am comforted by the fact that he set out to make his neighborhood better as his goal in life, and he succeeded. And I can't think of a better epitaph than that.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Amen. Also, again, thank you for your bravery, Ms. West, and for continuing to be a light and a guide for our city. Also, wanted to recognize Ed. My very quick Ed story was when I moved into my neighborhood. I met Ed. He told me, "Your child is gonna go to, someday your child is gonna go to Patterson Park Public Charter School." I said, "That's not where we are zoned for." He said, "Your child is gonna go to Patterson Park Public Charter School." So, I don't know who's gonna win, but that was Ed. He was extremely persistent. And he truly did, more than just about anyone else, revitalize an entire swath of southeast Baltimore that I'm now proud to call my district, through his will, through his grit, through his determination, and through simply not taking no for an answer. Just an amazing human being and spirit for our city. So, again, thanks for recognizing him.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I want to echo the sentiment of my colleagues here in thanking Tawanna Jones, as well as Dan and Hillary Hellerbach for being here from the Third District, and everybody else that's involved in West Wednesdays. If I could be there every Wednesday, I would. You know I got your back. And then, on the tip of arts announcements, I do want to remind my constituents, all who are watching on Charm TV, that this Saturday, at three o'clock, at Function Coworking Community, we will be awarding the second annual round of Artist District Grants, four three-thousand-dollar grants, going to visual artists, musicians, theater performers, writers, dancers, who reside in the Third District and have applied to this free program my office created this Saturday at Function Coworking Community, where I am very proudly opening up a one-day-a-week district office for the city's first-ever coworking agreement with any vendor in the city. I'm really excited about that, and I know my constituents are as well. And then, just some news that came across my feed an hour or so ago. I want to congratulate Kara Ober, the editor of the magazine Be More Art. I think that you can still see a copy sitting in the council president's lobby from about a year ago.
Two copies.
Two copies. Kara was the recipient of a fifty-thousand-dollar grant for an award in arts journalism excellence that was just announced today. So, I want to congratulate her and all the people who have made Be More Art what it is, not the least, which is the arts community here in Baltimore that is so, so incredible. And don't believe what anybody is saying about Artscape if they're saying that it was anything but fantastic. Artscape continues to thrive and show off the immense skill and talent that we have here in Baltimore City. And it was a great weekend for it, if not a hot one. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to highlight three events that are happening in the community that I think are critical and important to building hope in our community and providing resources to residents throughout the city. Two are my district. One, it's outside of my district, but there's an organization called Somebody Cares Baltimore that has, over the past several years, hosted the Day of Hope. And so, on this Saturday, July the twenty-seventh, from twelve-thirty to four p.m. at Bocheck Park, they'll have the East Side Day of Hope. And then, in August, August the tenth, at Douglas High School, same time from twelve to four p.m., we'll have one in West Baltimore. And I just encourage those who need resources to come out, but if you want to volunteer to also come out as well, it's just a tremendous opportunity to sow back into our communities. It's always a good time to give, but even, now is even a more appropriate time to give in our city. And then, lastly, there's an organization called Flo, Friendly Loving Opportunities, that will be hosting in the Seventh District their second annual homeless festival, as well as back-to-school give-back. And so, we'll be giving backpacks to, trying to give back, backs to almost two thousand kids, providing resources to homeless individuals, whether that be showers, food, resources, health screenings, you name it. Just another opportunity to continue to give back to the community. And this will be held on August the seventeenth, at twelve-hundred North Fremont, from twelve noon to six p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask Councilmember Reisinger add my grandmother, Shereen Burnett, to the list of folks for a moment of silence. She passed away last Thursday after a long battle with lung disease. But certainly not her story. She was a fighter. She was an organizer in East Baltimore. Uh, but certainly not her story. She was a fighter. She was an organizer in East Baltimore. She was active in her church. And most importantly, she was the, the best grandmother, uh, on the planet. Sorry to y'all grandmas, but my, mine was amazing. Um, so, um, and she was a big supporter of the work that we've been doing in this, in City Hall and inactive in City Hall, so. Um, keep us in, dart and pray. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, lastly, before I recognize Councilman Rosenger, just want to, uh, offer up that we know last week, we had the Charm City Games that took place with young people throughout the city. I had the pleasure of attending basketball and a little bit of track and some, some, uh, soccer matches. And I know Wrecking Parks will be letting the council members know who won what and who won the overall trophy very soon, so I'm looking forward to it being bigger and bigger next year. And I'm also looking forward to continuing trash talk between my colleagues. Chair recognizes Councilman Rosenger.
Mr. President, I ask for a moment of silence for the hundred and eighty-five homicide victims. Tyrone West, Ed Rutowski, and Trinay, uh, Burnett. And the next city council meeting will be held on Monday, August nineteenth at five PM in the city council chambers.
Thank you. There being no further business, this concludes the sixty-fourth meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council.